This is a big morning.
Fantastic, good afternoon.
Thirty. Call and order the December eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting for the Lake Elmo Planning Commission. First, and I'm on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next item is to approve the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
We need to make a change.
We will, we'll attend the motion. A motion to approve the minutes. From eleven ten twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with one amendment to those minutes, and that would be, I don't, was it?
I was here.
Vice Chair Char, yeah, I would assume that you called the meeting.
Yeah, he called the meeting.
With, with one, one amendment to the minutes is that Commissioner Ray Camp called to order the meeting.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting minutes with said amendment is approved. Next item, public hearing, we don't have any public hearings today.
Mr. Chair, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, correct, thank you. We need a motion to approve the agenda, ahead of myself.
Motion to approve the agenda of Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty five, Lake Elmo Planning Commission.
Thank you, I'll second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Now moving on to new unfinished business. When the first item is short-term rentals.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about short-term rentals, and this format will be a little bit different, it'll be similar to like a council workshop to get input, this is part of the work plan for twenty twenty five. So as you recall at the beginning, we, this went to planning commission as a housekeeping to include non-owner occupied uses and to move them into the bed and breakfast, this was pulled out, and then we went ahead and had, did a workshop on November twelfth with the council, and the council gave us some feedback on how, what they would like to see. So just to take a step back, the city currently does not allow short-term rentals in any zoning districts, we do allow bed and breakfasts in most residential mixed-use districts with the standards being owner occupied, single-family homes not to exceed five rooms. There's parking requirements, they are required to have insurance and a permit for two years. So the issue before the commission is, should the commission consider short-term rentals, and if so, should the zoning code be updated to allow them? Where should they be located? Doesn't really, certain zoning districts, would it be more appropriate lot sizes? Should there be a conditional use permit? Also, if you want to approve them, should there be a limit on how many? And then, we'll talk about this a little bit in the presentation, but should they regulate as an R one or R three occupancy? So currently, Washington County requirements, short-term rentals meet the definition of a hotel motel per state statute. The hotel motel is basically any place where you have occupancy under a week. We'll talk about this more in detail with what's a hotel and what's a short-term rental, in terms of the days and that sort of thing. So currently, Washington County is licensing jurisdiction for food, pools, lodging, they require licenses for short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts in the county. The county performs the inspections for all lodging establishments that they license, they also notify local fire inspectors during planner view for new lodging establishments. So the fire classification, this is where it's a little bit tricky, the state fire code basically has the cutoff between a hotel when it comes to an R three and R one occupancy at less than six guest rooms. So the state fire code is different than the building code. So the building type, what is an R three occupancy? So an R three occupancy is a classification under building code, it typically includes residential structures where the occupants are primarily permanent in nature. It also includes certain care facilities, congregant living facilities, and transient lodging with five or fewer guest rooms and ten or fewer occupants. So that's basically your typical home. And then an R one occupancy contains sleeping units where the occupants are primarily transient in nature, it includes transient lodging with more than ten occupants, hotels and motels. R one structures must meet fire code and ADA accessibility requirements. So what that means is if you're converting a house to an R one, from an R three to an R one, high cost improvements would likely be necessary for an existing single-family home to meet the requirements. Then what are neighboring cities doing? So Stillwater does permit short-term rentals. Their short-term rental license applies to hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, state licensed residential care facilities and nursing homes. It requires a city council approval, the license lasts three years, it's not transferable. The newly licensed rentals are inspected by both fire and building. Short-term rentals are only permitted in specific zoning districts, most of them are downtown in the historic district, but no more than fifty licenses shall be approved outside the business district. Last time I checked, I don't believe there are any available licenses, if there are, there's only like one. So they have performance standards, not host events, more than three unregistered guests, there's maintenance standards, you have enhanced parking. There's also a nuisance standard, this is not uncommon, where it's a three-strikes you're out. So if, after the third substantiated complaint violation within a twelve-month period, you can have the, your license revoked. So just to be clear with Stillwater too, Stillwater, the R three occupancy is only for owner occupied properties, five or fewer guest rooms, and ten or fewer total occupants, and it's a single-family home. An R one category would have to be converted to an R one if it's in a home, if there's no permit resident or greater than five guest rooms or greater than ten total occupants. Condos or mixed-use buildings also have to be R one, they're typically R one anyway, you'll see short-term rentals in multifamily buildings, so when you see these throughout the country, they meet those standards of R one. Sprinkler system doesn't kick in until they're greater than forty-five hundred square feet though. Oak Park Heights, they're permitted in all residential districts with a conditional use permit, the rental must have a state license for lodging, permits are not transferable, are not required to be owner occupied, must be a detached, single-family home, and may not be closer. Located closer than five hundred feet from another transient lodge, that could be a motel or Airbnb. They have performance standards with fire building code, limited three transient guests per bedroom or limited three bedrooms for transient lodging. Dining shall not be open to the public, and then you have to have additional off-street parking, so two off-street parking spaces shall be provided plus one for each bedroom over two bedrooms. They also have a nuisance excessive noise report to the city, violation, you could lose your license. Woodbury does not allow short-term rentals, so the-
How many own, go back, I'm sorry. How many does Oakdale have? Do you have any idea?
The number of short-term rentals?
Yeah.
I don't know.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Woodbury, so Woodbury does not just, doesn't allow short-term rentals, I think, under thirty days. And the same thing with Hugo, Hugo's the same way, it doesn't allow short-term rentals. So the city council workshop discussion, we had the same questions essentially regarding location, zoning, limits on how many. But just to kind of cover that, it was four of the city council members were there, one was not in favor of adding short-term rentals. The three others were interested in the conversation and asking questions. So basically, some of the comments were, they wanted to adopt regulations to protect neighbors from nuisance such as noise and larger gatherings, limit the number of lodging rooms, limit the number of guests, limit the number of total, the total number of short-term rentals within the city. That was pretty much the discussion, comments that they had. Other comment that was discussed was potentially if you live in a subdivision, your HOA would not allow short-term rentals too, that's something that HOA could, could decide. So we're here tonight because this is on the work plan, we have a pretty good idea of where the council stands. You know, this could be a contentious issue, so we wanted to bring it to the council first, just to see what their thoughts were. So really opening up the discussion on any of these items. You know, your thoughts on if they should be allowed, if it matters to zoning district lot size, would you like to see them in rural areas, not in rural areas, in the village? Would you like to see them in multifamily apartments or not in multifamily apartments? That's a big question, then also a limit, should they be limited in how many? If anybody has any comments.
What's current demand, I mean, are we trying to solve for a problem that doesn't exist?
I think that if you look at Airbnb, I think there were twelve listings when I lit, when I searched, so you have about twelve listings, we have about five bed and breakfast permits. When we brought it forward a year ago, we haven't heard complaints, so it was one way to kind of simplify the permitting, to say that these could be allowed anywhere. Obviously, there were some concerns, so, and we, we continue now in terms of regulating, there are some concerns with, with doing that, but I haven't seen much in terms of demand, people calling us. We, anecdotally, we hear that the demand is potentially from Stillwater, right?
Right, right.
There's events in Stillwater, people want to stay here. I think in general, short-term rentals are great if you have a larger house with multiple bedrooms, so people don't have to purchase multiple hotel rooms. It seems to, to be, you know, an advantage of a short-term rental. But no, it's just more of a permitting, because the permitting does not allow for non-owner occupied bed and breakfast, so we were just seeing if we could permit this, and this is what started this process.
Did you happen to look up Woodbury and Airbnb and see if there were any listed there?
I'm sure there are.
And that's what I'm thinking, like, they don't allow them, but I guarantee you could probably find twenty at least on, on there, so it's, it's going to happen, you know, whether it's permitted or not, and the enforcement of that is, I think, is what's difficult, especially for staff, to have to, you know, enforce it all. Should we just start with number one, and we can all weigh in, and should they be allowed or not? I mean, in my opinion, I, I think we should allow short-term rentals, anyone else is welcome to chime in.
I, I'd like to know where are they right now in the city?
I have that information.
And, you know, specifically, so, and what kind of issues?
How many are there?
Well, I found between Airbnb website and Verbo, there are a total of eleven in the city, and three of them are owner occupied. And I also looked up the bed and breakfast permit application, and it says, the property at which the bed and breakfast operates is a private owner occupied residence. Guests must stay not to exceed thirty days. They're signing something that says here that I've read and understand the conditions under which I may use my property as a bed and breakfast set forth by this application in city code section one five four dot three one zero A. I agree to abide by these conditions, failure to abide by these conditions will result in cancellation of the permit. So if they've signed that, and they, and they're not really an owner occupant, it's non-homesteaded, they've already fraudulently signed this, this document, but-
I mean, there's a good chance that those eleven didn't sign that document.
Yeah, so there's, I have, I have, of the eleven, there are seven that are registered, four of them that are not registered, and five of the seven are non-homesteaded. And three of the four that are, that are not registered are non-homesteaded.
Here regardless, it comes down to enforcement capability, whatever we're going to do.
I feel like we're not able to enforce the bed and breakfast, so I'm not sure we can take on something on a level of-
I, I can't imagine that requiring licensing and the fee for licensing would be enough to employ staff to follow up on compliance, I mean-
It's easy enough, I mean, when you, when they, I, I think one thing that you could add to, I mean, I'm just speaking of the bed and breakfast here, because I'm open to those, I think for people that own their home, it's a primary residence and a homestead, they should be able to have these.
That's current code, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm not, I'm not against that piece of it, and, but if, when, when they come in for the application, they can bring along their, their proposed tax record, and it says right on there that it's, you know, residential homestead. That would be one way for the city to verify it at least.
But that's-
Sure, that's bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast, it's in the conversation, right? You know, I know where you're going, but that's it, do we, we want to allow for short-term rentals?
And, and the problem with a little bit, I think, is, at least I would think you'd want to limit what, what zoning district you're in, right?
Right.
And, and if you do that, you really solve on the issue, because you're going to say, hey, you can do it along the ninety-four corridor, or the suburban edge, let's call it, and thirty-six. Well, then at some point, you gotta, you gotta manage somebody that wants to do it, you know, across Lake Elmo Drive there, right? So either way, you're going to have to have some way to enforce it unless you open it up completely, which I don't think I would like to see, you know, if you're going to go the R three route.
In my opinion, I don't, I don't think, I personally don't think there needs to be a zoning district. And, and reasons behind that are, if you allow a certain number of rentals, then you're not getting concentrated areas of them. You know, so, you know, if someone wants to stay downtown Lake Elmo, or if someone wants to stay on thirty-six closer to Stillwater, or wherever they want to stay on a farm, you know, that's got a pool or something like that.
Right, right.
To me, I don't know that a zoning district's appropriate, as long as there are requirements in place. I like the, the parking spaces, I like that if it's over forty-five hundred square feet, they need to have some kind of fire suppression system. But that, that's just my opinion.
So that would include a neighborhood, such as-
Correct.
Across the street or any, next door to a-
Let's say Tom gets sent, you know, and his family are gone for two years in business, and they want to have their home as a short-term rental rather than-
I get sucked back in the military.
Yeah, there you go.
Does Stillwater-
That's still his primary residence, and I think we need to distinguish that one is a, is a homestead, and the other one is not. One is, is a primary residence, he owns that home, even if he's gone for six months or two years, it's still his primary residence, he's homesteading it.
But he's also treating it as a short-term rental.
Well, or Airbnb, registered as Airbnb owner occupant.
Short-term rental.
I thought R three said the owner had to be, it would generally be living there at the same time, renting out a room, B and B is different.
B and B, they have to, they have to be owner occupied.
Short-term rental, new and not.
Rental is not, is that right?
Is that right for short-term, I thought the R three by definition was just somewhere-
It really just depends, I mean, so the bed and breakfast requires owner occupied, so you would just have that
Yeah.
As the permit for owner occupied, which we currently have.
Yeah.
If you wanted to have a permit for someone who wasn't owner occupied, you would basically create the short-term rental, I think is the easiest way to do that.
And R one versus R three just depends on the size of the space.
Well, if you go to R one-
Guest rooms and guests were some of the stipulations between R one and-
Oh, I, I thought it was owner-
Personally, don't like the R one and R three designations, I don't know that a short-term rental fits well into either one of them, but it's a good way to have a guideline for what it needs to be.
Did you say Stillwater has restricted to a zone, a zone like down, you said downtown where most of them are, is that by definition, is that by ordinance, or is that just where they fall?
That's, that's in the code, so they allow fifty outside of that district, and I believe that they're all have licenses except for, like, there's maybe one available, you know.
And in order to have those, do they have to do a CUP?
I would have to check, I think the CUP is outside, I think, I think it may be by right if they meet all the standards.
I do think the CUP is a good idea.
I think it's important.
If you want to have a short-term rental, you need a conditional use permit.
To say no way, no how. I, I mean, so from my perspective, short-term rentals are one of the, well, this is just, this is a stat, but the short-term rentals are one of the fastest-growing segments at over nine percent of the transactions nationally right now. Investors are buying these properties, private equity, real estate firms compete with wannabe homeowners. They can easily outbid consumers with cash offers, this drives up the affordability index and, and liquidates housing inventory. Asset management companies, we don't really want those, we want residents owning homes, single-family homes, and being our neighbors. I do not recommend allowing single, short-term rentals that are non-homesteaded, non-owner occupied in a single-family home inventory. Bed and breakfast homesteads, those are fine, you know, I'm totally fine with those, but the, the short-term rentals, they're going to alter our neighborhoods, they're, they have a negative impact on our citizens' safety, comfort, and expectations for predictability. And will transform the quality of life and the character of our community. My biggest concern is, you know, we're in a housing shortage right now, and so an investor's always going to be able to outbid a homeowner, and so they're going to eat up our inventory. And if city staff isn't able to handle the, or coordinate with the bed and breakfast at this point, how will we manage short-term rentals?
I, I, I think, Jane, that we've got, you're, I think it's a bigger problem than it is, again, there's eleven, I don't know, how many, how many homes are in Lake Elmo, rough?
Five thousand?
Five thousand and eleven right now, there's not, other than Stillwater, or maybe some family, you know, there's not a, a draw for people to come here.
Yeah, we're not a vacation destination.
We're not looting.
But, but there's, there's eleven, and it's no, and that's outside of code, and when we say it's okay, we would expect that number to grow. So you've got to be careful, and I, I tend to agree, you've got to be careful too, that is that what Lake Elmo, the community is asking for? Some investors might be asking for it, but is the community of which we represent, housing, a quiet little neighborhood next door, all of a sudden now, every four or five days, every week, every month, there's, I don't know if you're asking it.
What I get, what I'm getting at is that the problem there is going, that's fine, somebody's going to spend seven, six hundred thousand dollars on a house, they're not going to be able to rent that three hundred days of the year.
Yeah, if we were a vacation destination, I could see how investors buying up homes that, you know, owner occupants couldn't, you know, get.
Well, here's, I'll give you an example, can I give you the example of the last two homes that have sold, that, that are now registered as a, as an Airbnb? One of them sold for three hundred thousand, that's a starter home, that means that that family, a family couldn't buy that home, build equity, and then move up in our neighbor, in our community. The other one sold for three twenty-eight, both of those people have, have registered their property, but neither one of them are homesteaded, so they've said, I'm an owner occupant, one of them lives in Colorado. I mean, they're filling out the paperwork and they're fraudulently signing it, and so, I mean, there's an example right there, those are starter homes, and so we don't have somebody that's a, a family that's living in those homes now. They were bought by, by a, basically an investor who fraudulently filled out the paperwork. And that's what we need to be, you know, concerned about.
Yeah, I don't think the numbers are going to explode, right, I agree, we're not a vacation area, but I think we have to be careful that we, it doesn't matter, I guess, in my mind, if, if it's going to explode or not, is, is it the right thing to do in the Lake Elmo community? And I think we have to be careful, at least, at least without restriction and guide rails, right? That's why I threw out the question, is there a way to district it and say, maybe it's not fair to people living near there, but it's suburban exterior, like, along ninety-four, thirty-six, commercial areas.
Transitional areas, they could work potentially.
But to say, I think we were going to be a little risky if we say it's open anywhere you want to do it, no matter where. I, I think that's just a risk that I'm not sure there's a big demand to make us take that risk.
Jason, you mentioned that, whether it was Oakdale, someone required state licensing. One of the communities did?
I believe it's for like a lodging establishment, a state.
I guess, what, what does that mean? What, what's the state license?
That, that has to do, I believe, with like the hotel motel type license that you get.
So the state's got to come out and inspect.
Right, but we don't, so there's another question that we haven't mentioned, is, do we want a license, or do we want the county, so typically, it could be either, so right now, bed and breakfast is both. So I think it'd be unusual to have this license by the state, we haven't considered that.
Okay.
We've just considered the county and, and local, and I think the issue comes in when you're looking at nuisance and people, you know, having parties and maybe they're a problem property, then, you know, it'd be nice for us to just- Three, right, it'd be nice for us to just revoke it, right? Right, yeah, so if this moves forward, the next steps, if, if the planning commission wants to move forward with this, we're going to work closer with the licensing body at the county, and just see where our options are in terms of, you know, maybe they license and we don't license, but we have the ability to send verified complaints to them, and they agree to act on those, you know. So there's different options on how to move forward with that.
So in the rural district, there was, last year, maybe a year and a half ago, there was a, a property that somebody wanted to develop for a commercial use. And they wanted to have transient lodging in there, and, and they weren't able to do their commercial use, but if this would have been open to them, they would have had that set up as transient lodging in the middle of the rural district, in the same area that we were fighting to keep them from going into, it would, they'd just be able to get in there then, just like that, and, I mean-
That's why you need a conditional use permit.
Yeah, we, we need to have some, some guardrails on it.
I think we can all agree that there should be a conditional use permit if it happens.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with that, yep, for sure, and we should limit where they can be, they shouldn't just be everywhere, and we should limit the quantity, quality, quantity of them.
I always have a concern about starting something, and then there's an issue, and either it doesn't get resolved, or you're, you're creating a, a problem for the homeowners or they're already there, and then all, everybody has to jump through hoops and go to court and all this happy garbage. I'd rather prevent a problem than create a problem. And then have to go and fix it.
That, that's why I like the, the three strikes you're out, you know, if you get, if you get three, three complaints-
You get three chances to screw up.
Three complaints, and if, you know, after the third one, your license is revoked, or your conditional use permit is revoked.
Any one of these properties that are currently not registered or not homesteaded, it could easily be a long-term rental, and it could have a family that's living there. I keep thinking about, we, we are, have a shorting housing, housing shortage right now, and we're going to allow short-term rentals to be purchased in our community, I just, I-
I'm not very forward for it right now.
I just don't believe that the short-term rentals, that the value is there, and that would be the underlying reason somebody would purchase a property.
That's why these last-
I, but you're, but you're drawing an assumption you don't know either, you don't know the history of why they purchased that and why that's there, they may be in a position where, okay, I've got it, I'm, I'm in a transition of my life or my family, I can make a little bit of revenue to try to cover some of the mortgage or the cost of this house, so I'm going to do the short-term, I'm going to do this temporarily, but I, I don't think that you, we don't know, so I can't say I don't think, we don't know if they, if these people purchased that home specifically for this reason.
A few of them I can tell you I, I do know, because I did the research.
But, but what do you, so tell me, how do you know, Jane?
Because I looked it up, and I know the person, and they're a real estate agent, and they're, and they own a house in Stillwater, and they don't live in this home, and they're renting it out, and, and they filled this out, and they know-
But are they renting out short-term, or are they renting out long-term?
They're doing short-term rentals, it's Airbnb, and it's like five, five nights, it's on the website.
But if we're at B and B, we're not, we're talking B and Bs again, we're not talking-
He's a non-owner occupant, he's non-homestead.
Right, but he's-
He's a real estate agent, and he signed our paperwork that says-
Yep, I understand.
That you're, you're owner occupied residence, so fraudulently filled this paperwork out, knowing as a real estate agent that that wasn't true information. So, I mean, I don't want to reward people like that, I just don't think that's, I don't think that's fair.
Yeah.
And he's in, in a large piece of acreage, so, I mean, and it might not be as, you might not think that that's an impact, but I can hear my neighbors, they have little girls, and when they scream, it's startling, you know, and, and so now all of a sudden, you're going to have, you don't know who's over there screaming and why they're screaming? They were screaming because they were playing, but if somebody's screaming because they're playing and it's a different voice, I mean, it's, I don't know, I just, I, I'm concerned about our housing stock, and I, the disruption to our community by having short-term rentals, I don't like them.
That's, it's a tough one, I, I have to admit, I've been using short-term rentals a lot lately, a lot, and they're very convenient, and it's not because it's a destination. It's as I'm traveling through, we stop, we spend the night, we go on, so I'm using them a lot. But in my neighborhood, I don't want to see it.
Your HOA's not going to let, but I think that's another piece, we got to remove HOAs, because I don't know if there's an HOA.
But it doesn't matter where I'm living, it doesn't matter-
To everybody else who's not in an HOA.
Yeah, I don't care where I'm living, I just don't, I wouldn't want that as an exception.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it as my neighbor.
So I guess, and I think you started off with a question, actually, are we solving a problem, other than the council is asking us, saying that they'd like to do this, apparently, you know, with the three-to-one book, so, if we're not- So, if we're not solving a problem, then I guess I'm not sure. There's eleven people, is there a line of people waiting to do it? I don't think so.
Right.
But I mean, I, I mean, I...
You may not be solving a problem, but you're putting those guide rails in that you mentioned before, is that it's going to happen, so should we regulate it?
Well, so, so, yeah, so I'm okay with certain guide rails, rails that says in certain areas. I'm, I'm, I have a little challenge is, we just say it's open to anybody that fills out the paperwork.
And I think Jane's perspective is, there are guardrails already in place that aren't being dealt with.
Correct.
Yep. I have more of an enforcement issue there.
Well, it goes back to compliance, like, the other thing, city staff doesn't have the resources to enforce the compliance.
Right.
So, here we go again.
So, should we even do them?
Cost. Yeah, it says right in here, you know, enforced regulations would be difficult and costly. All right, neighborhood nuisances, such as noise and gatherings. I'm in the neighborhood, you know, I, I know what a nuisance is. I never used to be in a neighborhood, now I'm in a neighborhood.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? I'm sorry. If, no, I just, um... When you have those guardrails in place, I'm a, I'm a rule follower, so this is probably a bad person beginning from. But if you have rules in place and somebody's considering doing that, would, knowing that it's written down, make that person stop and think? I know some don't. Stop and think, "Ooh, I have to get permission to do this." With no guardrails, a person says, "Oh, there's no rule against it, so why can't I have it?" So, do you think it makes a difference to have the guardrails or not have the guardrails?
It does, because I don't think people know that they're not allowed.
Yeah, I'm sure they don't.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I'm thinking. Like, if you have an HOA, it says, in the HOA, a lot of them say, "You cannot have short-term rentals." So, people can see in black and white.
But to counter that point, people aren't going to know whether they're not supposed to or not either way.
Well, so the code is silent, the code is silent on the issue, right? So, you have to understand the code, read the code, understand licensing. So, if you just thought this was a good idea, I want a short-term rental, then if you read it, it doesn't say anywhere that these are not allowed.
But I guess part of it is, other than the group of us here that are involved in local government, if I'm living wherever and I'm, know I'm going to be gone for six months and I'm going to put my house on VBR, I'm ninety percent not going to check city ordinance to determine whether or not I can do this.
You aren't going to?
We would.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm a rule follower, I would check.
And, but that goes with anything.
But I...
But it allows the neighbors to say something and go to the city, and the city can say, "We don't have a permit for that, and so, we're going to have to shut it down," or tell them they have to, you know, revoke it, or cancel it, or whatever it is. Now, you could do more than thirty days. If you want to find a way to get around it, it's got to be thirty or more days. And then they could just, they don't need anything then. So, I mean, people are going to find a way to do it.
What the city of Woodbury does for compliance, so if they don't allow them at all.
Right, I like their...
Are they enforcing anything?
Well, I would say it's a lot easier to enforce, you can't do it, than it is to enforce, you can do it with restrictions. So, if we're trying to make it easy on enforcement and you say, no, none of it. Because that, that makes it easy, then you go to Airbnb and say you're out of compliance. So, if we're worried about resources on how to enforce it, well, to me, that makes it very simple. You're allowed zero. Because once you start, so it's either zero or everything is allowed if you're worried about, because I don't think you build a policy around whether people will follow the rules or not, right? You do it for, is it the right thing for the community? So, that's my two cents is, I would not be for just carte blanche, anybody can do it, if we put some very specific guide rails in it. Sure, with areas, but if you really want to simplify, you just still say zero and...
Well, I pulled up Woodbury and they, I see, um, four, five, maybe six. Less than a dozen, less than a dozen, but they're popping up.
They're there.
They're all-town homes. I mean, I guess, are there any single-family homes?
Well, seven ninety-nine, let's see, oh, let's see, that might be, that might be maple wood, that's maple wood.
And how many townhomes do we have now?
I mean, that would be a guide rail if you said townhomes, only, you know, multifamily only.
Let me ask the question to the group, what's, what's the other side of this? Why would, why, why the need for, to allow them?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if they prohibit it before, you know...
But why is there a, I mean, what's the value providing, other than, I'm a property owner, I've got rights, this is my house, I should be able to do what I want with it?
You should, as a homeowner.
Well, and that's, so, I think we need to look at the other side of that, the coin and understand that perspective as well.
But I can tell you, I mean, just looking at, looking this up, these last two people bought it as a, as an Airbnb.
But, you know, that's private property, that's America, that's what very private, or property rights are important to us, you're going to be able to deal with what you own.
They might be renting out for a year and turning around and selling it. You know, I mean, that's how real estate works, right? You sell for profit.
Yeah.
They can just put a full one-year or six-month rental in there. Why do they have to do short-term rentals?
Maybe they're waiting for...
It's harder to find a longer-term rental.
Longer-term rentals, yeah, right, exactly.
But I just, you know, I think the Airbnbs are fine. We just need to get these people that we have in town either in compliance or cancel their, cancel their permit, because they are not truly...
The only thing that's permitted right now is a bed and breakfast. So, if they're not going to treat it as a bed and breakfast, then they're not permitted.
Right.
Because we don't have short-term rentals.
Correct. So, I think, I think we need to focus on getting, getting these straightened out before we even take on something bigger that's going to be more complicated. Because once you open up that can of worms, you cannot get the worms back in there. I mean, I shared the story about what happened up in Marine on St. Croix. They had to, they had to go to court with that person. They couldn't get him to stop the, the bed and breakfast there. And he, he bought it with the idea of doing it. He already, he knew that they weren't allowed, and he fought it. And the neighbors had to fight with him. The neighbors had, he shut off the street, so the neighbors couldn't even get to their home. And, so then the neighbors had to sue him. So, I read that whole story on that person. So, once you, once you bring them in, it's going to be really hard to get them out. And, and they weren't even allowing it, and they were having a difficulty getting them out.
So, number one, should the zoning be updated to allow short-term rentals? I say no.
You say no, I say yes.
I say no.
Say no.
No.
Tom, did you have an opinion?
I never have an opinion.
He's thinking.
Get a pullout of it.
Or, you know...
I, I think we should, I think we should in the sense of private, of property rights.
Agreed.
Or, you know, here's my thought too. You say that, and, and like I said, I've used them. I don't know if now's the time.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I feel like more research maybe, more talking with the staff and seeing what they, they think, what can, what can we put into place. I, I'm not totally, totally against it, but I don't know if just right now saying yea or nay is the way to go.
But I don't want this to turn into Thirty-Eighth Chicago, because this has come around a lot. And I'm referencing Minneapolis and George Floyd Square, where they've spent millions of dollars on research and surveys and come back and keep on kicking the candle.
I don't think they need, we have the information that we need to know. Woodbury doesn't allow them, Hugo doesn't allow them, they're, they're growing communities, we're a growing community. I, I, we're not a destination like the St. Croix River. We have a housing shortage. I mean, these two last ones that recently sold were starter homes that a family could be living in. And I just, I just, that's gut-wrenching to me. I think that's really sad.
Does Aspen have them? I think that bed and breakfast, that's for it. But like I said, it's, I, I don't see the need for something like that right now. And I'm, I mean, there's no more, I'm for, you know, people to be able to do what they want to do, but I think we have to also consider the other people in the neighborhood and what's really needed and what's just thrown up here. It's, it's been prohibited before, and there, there isn't a big demand. There are problems with it. So, I don't think short-term rentals aren't, aren't needed at this point in time.
What about a paradigm shift? What about the property rights of the, of people that live in town that are citizens?
Right, that are already here.
I think that's way more important than some investor that lives in California or Colorado or wherever the hell they are, coming in and buying our inventory.
Just change zoning districts and make it this and that, and it's...
We already have lodging, we have resorts, that's, that's transient. I mean, isn't that enough?
I just like to speak too, because I, I've used the B and B thing onto like a graduation or something like that, and usually it's a townhouse. And what do I have right beside me? A big townhouse with rentals in it, so I can imagine what I'd get.
Got a whole bunch of them right over here that just got built, right next to my house.
Yeah, I mean, all of a sudden, they're, you're going to have a whole community right there that's going to, "Oh, well, now we can do short-term rentals with a little signature."
Even some of the, we go to Palm Springs most years for a good month or so.
That's been nice.
Yeah, I just, that's all I have to say. No, um, but, no, but, but even those communities, many of them, because that's a big, that's a short-term, that's everywhere you can get. They're pulling back, and many of them are saying thirty days is the minimum, for example, because of the issues that short-term is causing. There, there was a community-wide vote in Cathedral Hills, which is one of the communities, and they voted, I think Palm Desert's the same thing. I couldn't rent mine for less than thirty days. Now, I could still rent it.
Yeah.
But my point is, they're even starting to pull back because of the impact some of the neighborhoods. Now, that's different, because every street has, you know, thirty percent of them are rentals. So, I, I get, I totally get that, and we would never be there. But there's just a downside, is what I'm saying.
We have a housing shortage. We have a big housing shortage. Who want to own homes and build equity and have their families?
Okay.
Are there more questions for us? Come on, we're ready for more.
We're only on number one, actually.
So, you know, the consensus of the commission is that, no.
Majority.
It's not, it's not, it's not majority. It's not, you know...
It's almost a majority.
I mean, it's not the, not unanimous.
Two to four.
I'm sorry, it's not unanimous.
Yeah.
I think if, if it is allowed, I don't think it needs to be a zoning district or a lot size. I think there does need to be a conditional use permit. I think there should be a limit. And I don't know that the R1 or R3 occupancy regulation fits a short-term rental description that well. And in my opinion, it could be a single-family, it could be an apartment, it could be a townhouse. As long as it's, you know, obviously, the HOA needs to be approved if they're in an HOA, and it needs to have a conditional use permit.
The CUP is going to cover that. Is that good direction?
It is. Clear as mud.
The minority would, says, says that should be restrictions, the majority says no.
If they go ahead with it, I agree with what you just said.
Yeah, and, and if I could just add one more thing on there, if that is the case, could it not be everywhere? Just find, you know, maybe in transitional areas where it's commercial on one side and we're coming into the residential, or there's a buffer in there somewhere.
There, there's a conflict in whether there should be in a zone, any, there should be any zoning district confinement. Because you're saying yes, and we're saying no.
No, too.
Zoning, that it should be able to be anywhere.
See, I think if we do it, it should be by, in certain areas. But I, I could see doing it in certain areas. Outer edge suburban against commercial. I don't know how you do that necessarily, but multifamily units.
Things where there's already activity, where you got a lot of activity going on instead of in a quiet neighborhood.
All right, all right, thank you, thanks, Jason. All right, moving on.
That was a lot of fun.
We all still like each other.
Next item is the 2026 work plan.
I hate it.
So, VM?
Just kidding.
My topic's not as fun. All right, so tonight we're looking at the 2026 Planning Commission work plan. I wanted to first start off with talking about what the 2025 work plan had on it and what we accomplished this year. So, in February, the Planning Commission reviewed the batch of housekeeping amendments. For the second item, we did not have any cannabis applications this year, so we didn't need to do any refining or tweaks to our cannabis ordinance. Jason provided an update in November on the Old Village study and that getting rolled into the 2050 comp plan process. We talked about short-term rentals tonight, so I didn't check that off the list yet, but we had that discussion today. The Planning Commission reviewed the CIP in November. We had our annual training in March. There is a city council workshop tomorrow regarding public hearing notices, and city staff has updated the mailing notice template to have more robust information. There was the joint Planning Commission-City Council workshop in February. And then, we received two gold leaves in step four and step five of the Green Steps program for promoting sustainability and sustainable actions in the city. We implemented an interactive city map that was provided to you in an update in October. And then, throughout the year, we've reviewed a handful of land use applications and hosted public hearings on those. So, that's what we did this year. Looking at 2026, so I built it off of the same 2025 formatting. The items with the blue circles are new for 2026. So, I'll just go line item by line item, and then we can stop and discuss any changes or updates on the fly. First is processing the housekeeping amendments we identified this year. Again, these are minor, non-policy-related items, just cleaning up text or corrections. I have on here short-term rental registration and regulation ordinance based on our conversation tonight. It sounds like maybe Planning Commission is not interested in pursuing that, so we can take that off the list if, if you all agree. Reviewing the CIP again, that's an annual item. Preparing for the 2050 comp plan process, that's a new item. Providing training to the Planning Commission, that's another annual item. And then, the next three are processing land use applications for city property. First is the Fire Hall and Parks building, second is the City Seventy-Six Acre Park, and third is for the Hundred and Eighty Acres. Not guaranteeing that all three of these will come forward in 2026, but we'll be doing community engagement, and I assume maybe towards the end of 2026 or early 2027, we'd be looking at some sort of application. And then, holding the Planning Commission-City Council joint workshop, that will be in January of this coming year, reviewing some AUARs that are expiring soon. And then, I left on there promoting sustainability. That was bumped up to a level two based on Planning Commission request. And then, also based on Planning Commission request, I added language relating to promoting open space developments and wildlife habitat corridors. And then, leaving on there again is processing land use applications as they come up.
I have a question for commission. Does anybody, can anybody, what is Gold Leaf, B3, and Green Step programs?
Uh, those are all sustainable programs, if I'm not mistaken. B3 is.
Do you have any details on them?
I've read some of it.
Some of it is the...
I can chime in if you guys, if you guys need it. The Green Steps program is a five-step program for cities to promote sustainable initiatives. So, we got steps one and two, I think, in 2012 and 2013. So, it's, it's longstanding program, voluntary. In 2023 or 2024, we got step three. Step four and five, we got in 25. Steps four and five are around collecting metrics around sustainability. There are, I think, twenty-nine action items, and then Gold Leaf has forty-four action items. So, this is just to continue our, our work on, on Green Steps and Gold Leaf.
I would ask staff that they do a formal presentation to us on each of these, so we understand what we're committing to as a number two.
Sure. Just so you know, there's, I think we're planning on having the Green Steps coordinator from MPCA come out early next year to present to council.
Okay.
Did this used to be that Tree City stuff?
Tree Cities is part of Green Steps, but it's just one small part.
One small part of it.
Yeah, I'm happy to send out a link of, it's like, pretty robust program, so it's, it's kinda difficult to explain all of the, the steps and initiatives that are associated with it. But I'm happy to send out a link, so you guys can get familiar with it.
Could you also share what those first five things were that we've accomplished?
Sure, so step one, I can't speak to step one through three, it was before my time so much. But, I, I know it was a resolution to be a part of Green Steps. Step two is some, reaching those milestones, or at least working towards some of those milestones. Step three is, I think it's getting, working towards the twenty-nine action items, but within those twenty-nine action items, there are like ten steps that the city can take to hit those action items. Step four and five, again, are, are metrics, so I know that a couple of things that we accomplished, I think between 24 and 25, I think we had a stormwater assessment improvement, improved energy efficiency in city buildings, mostly due to LED lighting.
You just build a new building, and you're much more energy efficient than your old one, and I see points.
Yes, average miles per gallon for the city fleet decreased, I think, new green space was added, there are a couple more, but those are some of the top-line ones.
The holding ponds, maybe, are one of the.
Yeah, maybe initiatives towards that. Gold Leaf is kind of a, it's a program that comes after Green Steps, so to, to continue on your Green Steps work, you, you join Gold Leaf. To, we only got two Leafs this year, but one of them is for forming a team that we do internally, and then the next was for being part of the Tree Stewards program with Washington County.
And then B3?
B3 is just a way, it's part of Green Steps, but it's a way for the city to track energy efficiency in city operations.
More of a reporting thing.
More reporting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do that in a number of buildings.
So, are there any changes the commission would like to see, adding items, changing priority levels of items?
Just, maybe if you go back on, it's, by the way, this is all looks good, and I'm fine with this, I was more of a question, so I know the 2050 comprehensive planning process starts in 27, 27, 28?
We're doing some initial work this year, I would say, yeah, it's a long process.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I know, and is that, do we, does that, does it need to be considered as a three, or, I'm fine, I just, because if, you're gonna do some things on it anyways, I guess, if, if not much happened until 27, then are we having to do a run on that? I'm just curious, it's, nothing, I'm, just wondering if that should be a three, but.
I imagine this item would be on the Planning Commission work plan, probably until 2029, and so I originally put it at a level four, and then my goal would be, as we get closer to finalizing the plan, the priority level would increase, because we're spending more, you guys are spending more time on the plan.
I'm fine with that, I was just, get your feedback.
Sorry. Any other changes or comments on the 2026 draft? I did great on my first try, that's a first.
You did do well.
All right. So, the other item I'd like to discuss with you guys tonight is that joint workshop with city council, it's happening in January. Typically, I like to field if you guys have any questions or topics you'd like for staff to prepare for this discussion with city council. Otherwise, typically, all that we would review is the work plan, together.
I, I'd like to learn a little bit more about this, two million dollars they spent on this seventy-some acres between the two passive parks, the Regional Park Reserve and Sunfish Park, to put that big ball complex, supposedly. That's one of the plans, and I was wondering, that might be a little bit more appropriate over that Hundred and Eighty Acres? They might want to consider a different site for that type of use, you know? That, that kinda blindsided me, I didn't know that was happening until the other day.
All right, so I'll just prepare the, the work plan, and then that one discussion item for the joint workshop?
Yeah, because, from, from one of my council members, he said it's already a done deal, and I don't know how it can be a done deal when it hasn't gone through any process, or even the residents knowing that this has been done, supposedly, by taking a million dollars from the sewer fund that we have to pay back.
Updates on paths and crosswalks, especially tied to the county, you know? I, I will, you know, there's a sidewalk over here on Wildflower that the city said they're gonna take responsibility for. Yeah.
Yeah, not yet. Another thing is, is Stillwater Way, that's kinda like a freeway down there. It's the cutover by the gas station and past the cemetery. There's, they did a real sharp curve there, it's, it's not the safest place in the world.
And, and any other, and you guys may be able to do that tonight, any other updates? You know, we've got, heard the report that the school is, is up for sale to a community group.
Heard it sold.
I heard it sold.
It's sold for four and a half million.
An update on that is the Valley Community Center has been looking at sites, so the St. Croix Valley, we've been talking to them for over a year now. They are in their due diligence process to see, yeah, their project is feasible, so they should now buy them another month.
All right.
Are they locked in on that site, or would they consider the Hundred and Eighty Acres?
I think they really like that site.
And any update on, I mean, other properties for sale in the city, Fury is still. Phase two hasn't come back yet from the fire station?
Has not come back yet, and we have emailed, so. We are in the process, we have, we've ordered an appraisal for the site. The survey is basically done, we had the survey, the site.
Okay.
Title work came back for that, so hopefully the survey will be done, and we can do a right-away dedication that will come to the Planning Commission.
We're kinda jumping outside of, now we're kind of in the staff updates, so let me go back to the questions for the council.
We'll just need a recommendation from, from you guys on the work plan.
I move to recommend approval of the 2026 Planning Commission work plan as presented by staff.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have your answer. Thanks, Sophia. And now we get the city council updates.
Okay, so this agenda was drafted prior to the twelve-two city council meeting, so the RLS one thirty-two has been pushed to a later meeting, they requested to be tabled. And then upcoming meetings.
RLS one thirty-two, give us, is that?
That is the Creamery.
Okay.
Applicant is John P. Shaw.
Replanting, yeah, okay.
Upcoming meetings, we won't meet again until next year, January twelfth, and then the joint city council Planning Commission workshop is January thirteenth, which is a Tuesday.
Is that at six thirty?
It is. January thirteenth is the workshop, January twelfth is the first Planning Commission meeting of the year, so you'll have a, a doubleheader there.
All right, anyone else have any other comments or concerns? If not, seven twenty-five. I can do this, we will adjourn the, the December eighth Plan Commission meeting for the city of Lake Elmo.